Well, everyone, thank you so much for coming here tonight. Really appreciate you being here. Ms. Page, are we good to go? You're good to go? All right, perfect. So, special thanks. I know we have Mr. LaCory here from the Cable Company, and he's going to make sure this goes out there. And this is also being livestreamed, which is fabulous. We really appreciate that. So, before we get going on any introductions, there was a public comment opportunity. So, we had three people that wanted to do public comment. The rules on the public comment are you, when you come up, you have to state your name, position, or address, and you have two minutes. So, we're going to start off. We have Ms. LeBlank is going to be the first speaker tonight. You're welcome.
Good evening, Dr. B, members of the Boards of Selectmen, Finance Committees, parents, community members, and fellow PennTucket educators. My name is Amy LeBlank, and I am a para at Sweetser in a sub-separate ABA classroom. But I have also had the privilege of spending some time in a kindergarten and first grade classroom, and I'm on the E-Board as one of the para coordinators. I would like to start off by saying I love working for PennTucket and at Sweetser. In PennTucket, we have some of the best teachers, paras, custodians, office staff, and administration. So, when staff leave or let go because we have budget cuts, it makes it hard for teachers to teach. Most of us need to work, we also need to work two jobs to make ends meet. Most of us have families at home. We need to be there for adding a second job makes that hard. The last couple of years have been the hardest years to be working in education. When I have talked to staff this year, I have been told that this year has been the toughest year for them. With the cutting staff due to the failed override and the budget cuts, which have led to the increase of classroom numbers and the lack of paras in each classroom, some grades only have one grade level para, which can be difficult to make sure all students are receiving services. Then, when you have teachers out and paras have to cover, they don't always replace the para with a sub. So, those students are not receiving their full services. It's sad to see our kindergarteners be in a class with 23 or more students when most of them have never been in a school setting. It's sad that our students have to deal with the lack of staff because of the failed override. Kids are supposed to come first. I know all our teachers and paras and all the staff in the district put these kids first every day. Because of the budget, we are going to start losing staff, teachers, paras, paras, custodians, and office staff do not make a living wage. We are not, we, while looking at the budget, we would like you to take a few things into consideration. Through the pandemic, each town has received ARPA funds, and these funds could be used to retain staff or to give an incentive to staff in the district to make them want to stay in the district. We also ask that you please consider giving some ARPA funds to the district. Recently, the Fair Share Amendment passed, and we will have some money coming to the district from these funds. Please consider that when looking at the budget. And thank you for, Dr. B, for doing this awesome presentation. Thank you, Dr. B.
So, up next is Kristin Potter.
Good evening. My name is Kristin Potter. I live in Groveland. Fifteen years ago, my husband and I wanted to put down roots in an affordable community near our families that we could provide for our children the best education. We chose Groveland, and we chose PennTucket. Today, Brendan, my son, is in sixth grade, and our twins Owen and Emma are in fifth grade, all at the Bagnell. We have been very happy and pleased at the quality of their instruction and the support and the caring environment that they have received from the teachers and the staff. However, with the failed override, our oldest in sixth grade is faced with larger-than-acceptable classrooms and less support than in previous years. Coming out of the pandemic, all of our students are facing various social and emotional challenges, and the sixth grade class is no exception. Our pre-teens are at a critical point in their development, and the failed override forces them to learn in an environment that is less than favorable. Sixth grade is a critical age for these students as they prepare to enter middle school. By layering on all these challenges, we are doing them a disservice and hindering their development. Not to sound cliche, but our children and all of our elementary students are the future of this district. They have the right to receive an education that will prepare them to be competitive and successful throughout their lives and their careers. I ask that you, as Selectmen and Finance Committee members, to work with the school committee towards the best possible outcome for our children. I also ask that the families of our district come together and learn more about what is at stake here during this override challenges. Our children cannot afford a second failed override. Thank you.
And we have our final speaker is Beth Greenhagen.
Hello, everybody. My name is Beth Greenhagen. I'm also from Groveland. I have a daughter in seventh grade and a son in fifth grade at the Bagnell. I've also been a special educator for 24 years and a behavior analyst in public schools for 16 years. In my work, I see a range of classrooms and students from kindergarten to 12th grade. Besides dealing with the students' behaviors, I also get to observe a wide range of classrooms and teaching styles. And let me tell you something. Teaching in 2023 is so hard. The teachers and all the school staff have so much on their plates. It's a constant balancing act to keep all the plates in the air without any crashing. The demands are intellectual, social, emotional, psychological, and even physical. On top of all this, the PennTucket teachers don't need a lack of supplies, space, or especially necessary colleagues. To me, the most alarming thing, thing in the last overnot, sorry, last override not passing, is that there is not enough staff in the district, in particular, special education teachers. The school district is legally bound to follow special needs students' IEPs. If they can't, they will have to outplace those students. The cost of that far exceeds hiring a few more special ed teachers. How can we expect our children to learn, let alone be safe, without the staff, the needed staff available? The evidence is clear that money is needed for successful schools. The Learning Policy Institute published research on school funding, and more money per pupil improves every student's outcome. I urge you to do what is not only right by our children, but what is absolutely required for us to have a strong, thriving community. Thanks.
So, thank you for that public comment. I appreciate it. So, I'll begin by saying thank you, everybody, for being here tonight, public, and really appreciate the Boards of Selectmen and Finance Committee members being here. It's not unprecedented. We've done this in the past. I know we tried this November 1st. I hope this setting's a little bit better because, as I recall, some of us were sitting in the back and couldn't hear anything that was being said in the front. So, hopefully, we made that correction here. Just to get things started, I know there's a lot of you. There's microphones. If we can go through and just, I think the microphones, they'll hear their voices, so they don't have to grab the mic. You have to grab the mic. Okay, well, I'll pull the mic up. So, if you could just introduce yourself, just give your name and which town you're from and your position, that'd be great.
Dave Archibald, Select Board, West Newbury.
Finance Committee, West Newbury.
Ross Capalupo, West Newbury Finance Committee.
Dan Ennis, West Newbury Finance Committee.
Wendy Reed, West Newbury Select Board.
Rob Phillips, West Newbury FinCom.
Chris Wile, West Newbury FinCom.
Rick Parker, West Newbury Select Board.
Ed Watson, Groveland Board of Selectmen.
Mark Parento, Groveland Board of Selectmen.
Jason Naves, Groveland Board of Selectmen.
Kathy Castrenales, Groveland Board of Selectmen.
Ruth Rivard, Groveland Finance Committee.
Sarah McGrath, Groveland Finance Committee.
Alex Wood, Groveland Finance Committee.
Bill O'Neill, Groveland Finance Committee.
Marcia Zozak, Merrimack Finance Committee.
Chris Manning, Merrimack Board of Selectmen.
Mike Warren, Merrimack Finance Committee.
Bob Bender, Finance Committee, Merrimack.
Rob Gusterson, Finance Committee, Merrimack.
Ben Bolia, Merrimack Board of Selectmen.
James Archibald, Merrimack Finance Committee.
Tom Ackerman, Merrimack Finance Committee.
So, thank you all for being here. I really appreciate it. One of the first things I've got up there, so why are we doing this format to begin with? Couple different things. Particularly last year, we heard a lot of people saying we weren't sure, were they getting different information? They wanted to be on board and make sure everything was on the level. We obviously agree with that. We want to make sure everybody has the best information possible. So, what we started doing was with town administrators, we started meeting with your town administrators on a monthly basis. We had that first meeting, November 1st, just as a kind of an opener. And to kick off the budget season, we felt like this was a proper meeting. Now, here's the interesting thing about this year. I think you all know this. Because it's a new governor, we don't have to have, the budget doesn't, the governor's budget doesn't have to be ready until March 1st for us. So, it's a very small, very, very small window. We don't have all the numbers from the state yet. So, as we go through this season, it's more, it's going to be very challenging as we get to the end. So, we wanted to make sure everyone here had the same information, was walking away with the same information. And if people asked you questions, you'd be able to provide them with that information. The second reason is that when we do this normally, and you recall, I go, there's six organizations, right? So, you have the three Boards of Selectmen and the three FinComs. In a year, I typically go to five of your meetings to just talk about this. The problem is that some of your meetings fall on the same nights. So, it takes me two months to get to all your meetings, not because I don't want to be there, but just because of the timing. And in that timeframe, what I saw last year in particulars, the information I gave that first meeting and the information I gave in the second meeting, that was different. Not because I'm changing numbers. I am changing numbers, but because we got more information, and that information changed those numbers. But if you're on the outside and you were seeing that, you were thinking to yourself, oh, there, there goes the school. They're just manipulating the numbers. And I just want to make sure no one's under that impression that that's what we're, we're doing. So, just a quick review, that November 1st meeting. I'm going to just highlight, before we get into numbers and money, just quickly, where has PennTucket been in terms of academics? And so, when we talk about our dark districts, these are the similar, these are the school systems that the state says are most similar to us. There's 13 of them there, 13. So, this isn't something that PennTucket picked that we said these were the most similar. This is what the state says. These are the districts that are most similar to you. So, when you look at the English Language Arts, and you can look at 2017, and you can look at 2022, am I happy about 2022? Nope. I'm more happy about 2022 than I am 2017. And you should be asking, what was happening in 2017 that put us dead last in that group? And there's answers to that. We were coming out of a situation where we had no assistant principals. You had a superintendent who was trying everything to prevent an override and went ahead and put himself as an interim principal. So, all the new curricula is coming. No one's overseeing that. No one's making sure that the curriculum is consistently applied across the district. So, when we came in in 2018, we knew we had to make adjustments in 2018, and that's what we did. Turns out, the English Language Arts was something we did in year three. So, going from last to 10, 10, 8th, and 9th was, is good. In math, much better. So, math is better for two very important reasons. One, one of our towns was implementing the math program that we had adopted in 2018 and put into place. And the second thing was, we implemented math the very first year we were here. You can't go and implement all curricula at the same time. You have to slowly move things in. So, this was a big increase. And now, that's really good. This next one's more important and more significant. We were ranked 40 in the 43rd percentile compared to all districts in Massachusetts. In this four-year time period, we've gone from 43rd to 64th. Why? Because the curriculum is there. We have to support people that are in place. And during the pandemic, we kept things going. The teachers kept it going. They understood what was needed. The parents were home, doing everything they could to help their kids along. We went to school more than any other district in the area, and that made a significant difference. But that is a very significant number there. So, when we talk about the education part of it, we heard up here a couple of public comment speakers about, talking about the class sizes and things like that. So, that's always going to be a concern for any parent, anybody who's interested in education. So, I want to go over this real quick. So, this is a spreadsheet, and I want to go over each column. So, that first column, that's just, that's what the school building is and what the grade level is. So, in this case, you have Sweetser. You have kindergarten for a second, and then three through six. And the next column, number of students, that is this year, how many students are in that grade level. And the third column is how many teachers are teaching at that grade level. This is just classroom teachers. We are not talking about special education teachers, art teachers. We're just talking about the classroom teachers. So, when you do that out, the average class size, it's easy, right? A 69 divided by three teachers, that gets you 23 in a classroom. Now, this next line is an important one. Targets class size. So, you'll see every time we talk about K1 and 2, 18. So, why 18? 18 is an optimal number. Because if you have 15 minutes per kid, 18 times 15 gets you four hours and 30 minutes. That is exactly how much time a classroom teacher has in a classroom with their children. So, as soon as you go over that, and you go to 23 in this instance with kindergarten, and again, that's at Sweetser, that's 75 minutes that are unaccounted for, that get taken away, which means less time with those children. And when you do that for one day, it's just one day. But you're doing that for 180 days. So, the amount of time that gets lost is significant. And you can all understand, if I have 18 kids versus 23 kids, the impact that has on student learning and student opportunity. And if you talk to a kindergarten teacher, and my mother-in-law was one, if I asked you, is it easier to teach 23 kids or 18 kids? It's not, it's no contest. Five additional kids, when you're learning the alphabet and you're learning to read, is staggering difference. So, when you look at the far right, the red and the green, a negative 5, that's a big issue. That's a problem for us as a district right now. The negative 4, that's a problem. A negative .33, it's in the red. Is that a problem? Not really. That's, that's, that's certainly manageable. And same with the greens. If it's green, that means we're below the average. So, that's how this chart works. And you can see, when we're looking at this, Sweetser School is in tough shape. And you'll see why in a little bit. And at Donahue, they're in pretty good shape. The numbers are right about where we would want them to be. By the way, 21, 20 is what we contractually are supposed to target. It's not realistic, but that's what we try to go for. At Bagnell, that's a lot of red. So, I'll let you take that in for a little bit. It's not horrible, except for when you get to sixth grade and you're looking at second grade. I will argue that at kindergarten, in first grade and second grade, you want to hit that 18. You really want to hit that 18. Those are developmental years. If you do well there, the rest of your career is in good shape. If you fall behind there, you struggle to catch up. A very important thing, let's see if this works here. There we go, it does. So, I want you to look here, the number of teachers. There's four teachers there, right? So, you have 81 kids. That's a big, that's a big bump. Down here, you only have 51. You only have two teachers. So, that's fine. That's a, it's a big number. But we had to make cuts, and you'll see that when we get to the cuts. So, sixth grade, very big. Next year, there's 69 kids. And there's two teachers in sixth grade. So, when you do 69 in two classes, that's a class of 34 and a class of 35. That right now, that is what it is. At Page School, so, lots of green there, but important to look at again, kindergarten and first grade, early elementary. Not surprisingly, we have brought in a lot of young families. Not surprising, because when you have a new facility, people are excited about that. People are coming, they understand what we're doing. One of the things I often hear about Page is, well, you never cut anything at Page. Okay, well, let's talk about that for a second. If you look at the numbers here, there's two teachers at every grade level, except for this one. And yeah, you could cut that down to two, and that's 29 and 29. Again, if I'm a teacher, 29, 29 for, for third grade, that is not a good situation. But if you cut anybody else on that, they have 40 kids in a class. So, when you hear people say, well, they don't ever touch anything, there's nothing to take here. That is, those are the numbers. So, why do we have so much red? Why is, when you, we went over those slides, why is there so much red that's up there? That's a good question. These are, this is chart of all of our student population over the last 10 years. So, you can see, 2012, 2013, we're up to just under 3,000 students. But we end up losing 725 students over the last 10 years. And someone here knows why. Why do we lose 725 students? Yes, Ruth. School choice, that is correct. So, we no longer do school choice. We haven't done school choice for a really long time. You'll see in the slide coming up that the last school choice students are in 10th grade right now. So, there is no more school choice. 725 is what we've dropped down. Very important as well, look at the last three years. 224, 2224, 2210, 2234. We have plateaued and started to go up a little bit. It's 10, so I don't think anybody's going to look at that and think that's staggering. But it's important to understand, okay, so, we've dropped down. And this is what's happened. Over the last 10 years, we've lost 725 students, and we have cut 50.7 classroom teachers. And while we've cut 50.7 classroom teachers, we've added 10 special education teachers for the exact reason that Beth had mentioned earlier. Because if you have students that go out of district, that's extraordinarily expensive. It's better to have, first of all, first and foremost, it's better to have students stay amongst their peers because that's who they're going to be growing up with. That's who they're going to be playing with. If that's not possible, then yes, they have to go out of district. But we cut 50.7 and we added 10. So, a way to consider this. In a classroom, if you were asking me to say, okay, how many teachers should I cut? We've lost X number. Well, every 25, I would cut a teacher. In this case, I did 20, because if I do 20, you cut 36 teachers. But we cut 50.7, not 36. We cut 14.7 more teachers, which throws us way out of balance. We have gone out of balance in the last 10 years. If you look at just the last five years, we dropped 203 students. That should be cutting 10 teachers. But we didn't cut 10 teachers. We cut, cut 34.1. So, that's how we end up being in the red, so far in the red with those numbers. So, when we look at the last three years, the balanced populations, we're plus 10. The last choice students, as I said, they're in 10th grade. So, why do we cut so much? Because we wanted to avoid an override. We did not, when teachers were retiring, we did not replace them. We were trying to avoid a situation where we had a new building that was being built, and then we have to go out again. But we looked at this, and we understood what the problem was, and there was no avoiding that last year. So, when last year's cuts did happen, here's what happened in terms of the cuts. And sometimes, I'm bringing this up because sometimes people will say, well, you guys just made this work. You figured it out. There wasn't anything that really happened. That's true. And maybe that was, maybe that was the experience for your child. But I assure you, that's not the experience for everyone's child. So, we cut back on supplies, not devastating there. Sixth grade, parents had to pay for that trip. That's a traditional trip. Seventh grade, they had to pay for that. That's a traditional trip. District and music, you might remember this. We had cut, there's a contractor percussionist that comes and helps around with all the kids. Excellent, excellent program. We had to cut that. Now, it's contracted service. So, what happened was, the, the, the PennTucket Fine Arts did a little bit of fundraising, and there was money that they had in an account. The, our, the Performing Arts had an account. They used all that money with a little bit of boosters money to salvage that. So, that contract stayed in place. That account for that, for them is wiped out now. That was a one-year thing. Middle school, high school, obviously, when you have that many cuts, you reduced all curricular from each of the curricular areas, there were reductions in programs. And then also, extracurricular programs got limited as well. So, for the extracurricular, if we just look at athletics, when you look at that list, these are primarily freshman sports and JV2. Now, JV2, if you're not, that means basically it's freshmen, some sophomores. It's just the entry level. JV wrestling, there was a varsity wrestling coach and a JV wrestling coach. We cut the JV, so we had one coach. This year, we actually had to reinstate that because they had way more kids show up. We thought they were going to be in single digits. They had 22. You need to have two coaches when you have 22 kids wrestling. And JV volleyball, they had three coaches. They had a varsity, and then they had assistant coach in the varsity and a JV coach. So, we cut that JV coach, and then the assistant became the JV coach. Now, the impact this has, I think you all well understand this. There's a girls' basketball game going on right now. There's a boys' basketball game, and it was JV, I would encourage you to go out and take a look. You'll see 18 kids lined up on the bench. That means they are not getting out there and competing. So when you had a freshman program, those kids are out there, they're getting playing time, they're getting experience, they're learning the game. When you have 18 kids out there, you're not. And that's just basketball, you can apply that to sports all across the board. So basically, what we've done is, we're focused on education, we want the full experience. But we are damaging our programs in athletics. So for teachers, there was this concept. Remember last year, I was going around saying, "If this doesn't pass, then here's what we're going to have to do." And again, there's no reason for me to make that up, it's just math, it's simple numbers. So here's what we did end up cutting. You can see, the art teacher at Page, sixth grade at Bagnell, you'll remember that, right? Because that's where next year, if we don't add that teacher back, it's 34 and 35 in a class. We cut that position. Bagnell kindergarten teacher, you'll remember that, we were in the red there. Middle school, we had the nurse, that's a whole other thing I'll talk about in a little bit, but that caused all sorts of issues, I get a lot of parent complaints about that. Just factual information. I had to make a decision. Do we cut the nurse, or do we cut another classroom teacher? If we cut the classroom teacher, that was going to be the first grade level that was in the 30s for those classes. We cut the nurse. High school, you had the English teacher, math teacher, chorus teacher, art teacher, wellness teacher, music teacher, science teacher in the middle school. And at Sweetser, you remember those reds? That's why they're there. Cut a kindergarten teacher and a first grade teacher. Had two paraeducators, and the library media aide. So those were very real cuts that triggered all those red numbers that you saw earlier. So one of the interesting things about that was, yes, we made those cuts. It would have been far, far worse if the school committee did not step in and take measures to try to prevent so much worse. And here's what happened. Our before and after-school program, those fees increased. Athletics, we used to have an athletic cap. Each family paid no more than $750 a year. That cap was removed, the fees were all doubled. So now, if you, November 1st, I mean, you heard a family say this, and we got a couple, like there's families paying $3,000 to $5,000 for their kids to participate. Just what it is, there's no cap. And then we also, the school committee added stabilization funds, a quarter million dollars in stabilization funds. So to all that, that all totals up to $455,950, which saves just over seven teaching positions. So had that not happened, that's where we're going. That's where you're taking out that many more classroom teachers. Also, a public comment made this point as well. The reason why we say classroom teachers, the classroom teachers includes art, but you can't take out a special education teacher. If you do, that student, again, it's an important concept. That student or students they're serving are going out of district, and that is going to be exponentially more expensive. So right now, where are we? So I wanted to look at the things that we actually do have control over, and things that we do not have control over. So here's things we don't have any control over. So OSD is an organization run by the state. I believe it was, used to be called the Rate Setting Organization. So they actually set the tuition rates for private schools that our special education students attend. Over the last 13 years, that's been less than 2%. So when we budget, we budget 2%. OSD decided, without talking to anybody in public education, without talking to any legislators, decided that they were going to set that at 14% because lobbyists went there and said, "Hey, costs have gone up, we're losing our teachers to public schools, we need to increase salaries, we need 14%." And that's what was agreed upon. Had any one person called me, I would have said, "Okay, let me tell you what that means to me here at Pennsylvan." That's going to mean about $480,000, which, if you do all that out, that's going to cost us seven and a half teachers. Those calls were not made to anybody. So 14%. We have no control over that. Well, when we get to what can you do, that's one area I will talk to you about. So the addition of special education teachers and related personnel. We have a choice, I guess we do have control, but we can make the bad decision to not add those people and send students out, or we can make the decision of really no control. You have them, have to hire those teachers and make sure the students stay in the district. Inflation, all of our towns are going to experience that. The utilities increase, all of our towns are going to experience that. Student Opportunity Act. You've heard me, so if you're new, you haven't heard me say this, if you've been here, you've heard me say this. Student Opportunity Act means next to nothing for Pennsylvan Regional School District. So you'll read in the paper, the Student Opportunity Act is going to be, even the new governor's mentioned that that's a commitment to make sure it's fully funded. That's wonderful for a lot of districts, just not ours. To Pennsylvan, that means about $66,000. So when you see the billions of dollars that spread out over seven years, that does not mean anything to us. I'll take $66,000, but it's not significant. So what do we control? So we definitively have control over how many classroom teachers do we need? What programs do we want to run? So in this year's budget, we're looking at, okay, we know we need to fill some gaps. We need to have a sixth grade teacher at Bagnell, we need to have elementary teachers at Sweetser. We know we have a robotics program in eighth grade, seventh and eighth grade here in the middle school, that's intended to keep on going so we can develop STEM. And have a whole new program running, which we also have a grant out there for, I think about a half a million dollars we're trying to get, to help furnish all the equipment that we would need for that. So all of that, art, business, wellness, nursing, those are all, well, those are all programs that we're looking to have. The nursing, I'm going to skip down to the bottom. So because we cut the middle school nurse, it created in this building a ratio that was not acceptable to the Department of Public Health. So the ratio, they want one nurse for every 500 students, which, for everyone, that should make sense. Like, 500 students, a lot of kids, kids have medical issues, you need to be able to provide them an adequate medical support when they need it. So when the time came for us to make that decision, we made it. And we submitted for something that's called medical delegation. And what that means is, I could go to Dr. Archibald and I could say, "Hey," if he was a teacher, I could say, "Look, I'm the nurse, I'm going to show you how to give the student medicine." So I'd teach him how to give the student medicine. And because we had approved medical delegation authority, he would be able to, on a field trip, give the student the medicine. We've lost that, we can no longer do that. So now, if we want to go on a field trip and a student needs medication, whoever is running that trip has to make sure there's a nurse that they can find. We already heard it's tough to find pairs, it's tough to find nurses, it's tough to find... Or you can't go on the field trip. And so there's already been a lot of, "You can't go on the field trips, because we can't find a nurse to do it." You can't pull the nurse from the school. There's issues with that that I've battled with Department of Public Health over. I understand their concept, but I think they're penalizing us for essentially not having money, which seems discriminatory, but that's a whole separate issue. So the other piece that we control, technology. We had a windfall, again, I'll say this time and time again, collaborating with all three towns in order to be able to get and upgrade our systems with technology. But we still have a long way to go. So we can make a decision, do we upgrade that or do we not upgrade that? I know in this budget, we've selected, we have to upgrade not everything. Incrementally, we need to start planning to make sure we replace equipment that's old, outdated, so it's functioning correctly. One of the first numbers you'll see, when the first budget we came out, we were trying to do it all at once. And that's just not a good idea, because even if you had the money to do that, it's going to come up again in seven years where it's going to be all at once. Support personnel, coaching positions. In the new budget, we've reinstated the coaching positions. Cap on athletic fees, in the new budget, we're working in a cap of $1,500, I believe is what the school committee indicated that wants a cap at $1,500. The cost of before and after-school program, we're going to try to keep that where it is. And then I already talked about Department of Public Health. So one of the things here, that it's really important to understand from a regional district budget perspective. During the course of this year, we have had students who have been placed out of district. We have to front that cost. Dr. Jarvis is here, I'm going to guess the average cost for us to send a student out of district, about $120,000, somewhere around there? All right, so if we get to a collaborative school, that doesn't include transportation. If it's a collaborative, it's just over $60,000. Outside of that, it's going to be about $120,000. So we've had to send several students out this year. In addition to that, we also had to hire a couple teachers, we had to bring teachers in. These are not things that were in the fiscal '23 budget. We had to come up with that money. So the same situation you all have when you're talking about free cash or whatever it is, yes, there's cash there, can you use it on this project? Sure, you can use it on that project, but if it snows too much and you run out of money, what are you doing? And we face that exact same dilemma, we're not different in that way. So the big question, are we going to need an override? So right now, what the governor has and hasn't, I said, we know that, we don't know how they, or if they will address the 14%. We think there's a good possibility that may happen, but addressing that would be significant, very significant. I will tell you that just in the North Shore Superintendent's Roundtable, the biggest cost was $1.3 million. There's a district that cost them $1.3 million. The cheapest was $17,850, which is just a district of one elementary school. So curious to hear on that. We haven't heard about regional transportation yet, we've heard about transportation. We have heard insights on the funding of McInvento, that doesn't apply to us too much. Student Opportunity Act, I already told you that, that doesn't mean too much to us either. And the funding of Circuit Breaker, fully funding Circuit Breaker, which is extraordinarily important. But at what rate, is the question. If, as always, I talk about this, subject to appropriation. I understand why it's there, but I don't like the word "subject to appropriation" because it tells me, even though it's supposed to be 75%, it's only if they feel like giving us the money. If it was 75%, we could bank on it, we would know. So here we go. So estimated shortfall, let me clarify what that means. Estimated shortfall is, after we've collected what we think we would get from you normally, in a normal year, that's our shortfall number right now. And we're still working on this number, you know, the budget books have not gone out, you'll see that in a little bit. But it's worth noting, when we first did this, we were just over $3.1 million. So we have cut that way back. This second sentence here, I need to spend some time on. And level services, we're at $1.3 million was the shortfall. Level services. That means, if we provided everything this year that we have going on, if we provided the exact same services, didn't take anything out, didn't add anything, we would have a shortfall of $1.3 million. So when you look at the 1.6 to 1.3, we're looking for $374,000 more, mainly in teaching positions. So these are common things I hear people say or think about. Sometimes these are misguided. I understand the philosophical thought behind them, but sometimes what they're, they're either just wrong, hurt our school system, or misguided. So we need the state to fix this, let's organize. Yes, sir? Yes, sir. The town's giving us 3%. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So we need the state to fix this, let's organize. Sure, I'm all about that. I've heard this for the last five years. Formula has not changed, things have not changed. I don't disagree with this concept. I think the state itself would agree, yes, there's changes that need, no one's going to disagree with that. It's a matter of how does this come to fruition, how does this happen? This isn't something that our three towns can go ahead, "Hey, we've got the formula, just apply this." It's not there, that's not going to help us, it's not going to help our kids this year or next year or the year after. They are too top-heavy, just cut administrators. Okay, let me go back. Here we go. Here you are. This is what happens when you cut administrators. And I'm not saying that administrators solve the problems. What I'm saying is, when you have teachers who are doing an outstanding job and don't have support and guidance on what they need to do, and don't have the curriculum or the basis for, "How am I supposed to follow through this curriculum?" This is what happens. We've seen this movie, we know how this ends. And I would also point out, you very much, if that's your belief, you should go around and look at all the other regional school districts and compare. And I promise you, promise, we aren't even close. Take a look at your tech schools, pull up their personnel, find out what they've got. We are anything but. And I assure you when I say that we are a skin and bones, that's all we are in terms of administration. This is just a scare tactic, so, no, this is reality. And if reality is scary, then yeah, I guess so. Not a scare tactic, this is just, again, it's not hard, it's numbers, it's math. You can take the emotions out of it, you can take the personal side out of it, it's just numbers. What about, and you know, someone hyper focuses on one specific item? Why do they need that? Okay, that's a great question. You should call up a person and ask them, "Why do you need that?" And when you're staring at something that's $10,000, and you're looking at a shortfall of $1.6 million, I'm going to ask the question, "Is that really what you're caught up in?" Yes, everyone should go through and should look at the budget. If something seems out of kilter, you should ask about that. Call up and ask. Greg LeBrecque is great at answering questions and explaining, "Oh yeah, this is what this is for." But getting hyper-focused on and trying to derail an entire budget over one small thing, that's doable, but they're just going to need to adjust their budget. Yep, we've done that. Like, go over the cuts again, we've done that, we do just adjust our budget. That is what we do all the time. And this is happening too quickly, we didn't know about this. I don't even know what to say about that, that's something I hear all the time, like... It is happening too quickly. I would just tell you, my stress started in September this year as opposed to December. That's way too soon for me, I agree with that sentiment. But the budget season is always the same. The fourth Thursday in January is when the governor's budget comes out. Once that number, we have the cherry numbers and we're rolling. It's just that this year is so much later. So what happens into our district if an override is needed and it fails? And you keep on, I'm just going to say this. I'm saying if it's needed. Like, we don't know, like, you saw that shortfall. I mean, common sense would say, probably that's what we're going to probably need an override. But we don't know, maybe there's some magic that happens, Senator Taurey waves his wand, and all of a sudden, boom, we're flush with cash, that'd be amazing, he's good like that. But I use this term "if" because it's not, like, it's not set in stone yet. So, again, this isn't hard math. So if you have a shortfall of $1,674,345.86, and if you estimate a teacher costs $65,000. By the way, a teacher is not $65,000, entry is $52,000. We put 65 because some of our $52,000 teachers, they're already gone. They got let go last year. Plus you have benefits as well. So that's about the equivalency of cutting 25.8 teachers. Now you should be asking me, "Where are you taking that from?" And I'm going to tell you, I'm working on it. I don't have good answers, you saw that red, I don't have good answers for that. And/or it's equivalencies, right? So you can move things around, try to figure out. But that number, just keep in mind, we cut all those people last year. This number right here, I think we've added six or seven teachers in this year's budget. That means, that's 18.8 existing people we'd be cutting. In addition to what we cut last year. So we already raised the fees for four and a half school and athletics, so that's likely not a viable source. Cutting regional transportation, yep. We've talked about that. So the towns that are most hurt by that, if you're in Groveland, that will hurt you. Because if you're within that range, I believe it's a mile and a half to Bagnell and the middle school, high school, we don't have to give you a bus. So maybe we're just sending one bus or two buses for elementary, and probably one, maybe one for high school. If you're in Merrimack, your elementary's probably not getting a bus at all, or maybe just one bus. And you'll have the buses for the middle school, high school. If you're in West Newbury, it all depends. Class sizes will balloon, that goes without saying. I think I've made myself clear, like, I will be hyper-protective of K1 and 2, because that is developmentally where things have to happen. We will likely put everything we have left in ESER to try to prop up what we can. So it's important, so ESER, for those who are out there, the elementary and secondary school emergency relief, that was the ARPA funds, the COVID funds that the school received. Next year is the last year we have to use them. So everything that we would have left, we would prop that up. But, an extraordinarily important concept. Stabilization, the school committee selected a quarter million dollars to add to this year's budget. That's one-time funds going to fund something that's teaching positions, that keeps on going. So now you're starting fiscal year '24, negative $250,000. If you spent the one-time funds on a one-time project, different story. But these are teaching positions, so that's negative 250. If we had $300,000 and we did it here, the next fiscal year, you're $550,000 in the hole for fiscal year '25 plus. I suspect the school committee would say, "Let's use more stabilization to cover." So let's say they did another quarter million dollars. Now you're $800,000 in the hole for fiscal year '25. And what have you done? $550,000, $65,000, you've saved nine positions. So now we're still cutting 9.8 teachers. This is a great question. So before I get into this, I will just tell you, budget meetings are just starting to be held across districts. So there's no public comments or a public thing saying, "Oh yeah, here's what their budget is." That doesn't exist yet. But we're close, all the superintendents are very close, we all go through this ride together. So we send out things, "Hey, how are things looking for you? How are things looking for you?" And it's not good. I would fully expect that this, for our small communities and regional districts, it's a year of overrides. So every small district, every regional district's in really tough shape. I think there's some exceptions. I don't know that the techs are going to be nearly as in bad shape as we are. The big difference between everybody else and us is that we're coming off a year of a failed override when we had to make all those cuts. So the smallest increase that's known to me at this point through our superintendents is 4.5%. And the highest is above 6.3. Right now, we're at about 5.1%. I had one district that does very well, they have a shortfall of $2.5 million. Now, if you're a Daily News fan, you're going to really appreciate this. So here's some headlines out of the Daily News. Oh, that one's too far away, here we go. Port Schools Looking At $500,000 Increase In Special Ed Costs. So that was December 21st, Newburyport Daily News, that's talking about, Newburyport Public Schools saying, "We're going to have to increase at least a half a million to cover the cost of that 14% increase." Newburyport and Pennsylvan are very similar, so the numbers are also very similar. Whole article on that. Next one. Newburyport School Superintendent Presents $40.1 Million Budget Proposal. That was last week. The curious thing on this, is that budget proposal? They were looking to do level services as well. It's $4.9 million more than where they are now. So when we talk about cut administrators, they're too top-heavy. If you're increasing 4.9 maintaining level services, they have far more people than we have. Far more people than we have. And this morning, Triton Superintendent Hoping For No Budget Cuts. So, in this sense- So, in this instance, they're trying to address all the costs, they have a $900,000 new bill for students who are going to be going out of districts, out of district for the special education expenses and all the other factors that are coming into play. Just trying to maintain what they've got and hoping not to have cuts. So that's around us. That is, those are the headlines that are coming out of the papers right now. And I'm promising you, this is going to be the story particularly on the North Shore. I don't know how this impacts other places, I suspect the western part of the state, South Shore are going to be in similar situation. So our process with our budget, and within the next two weeks, all the towns will get the budget books, the school committee will get the budget books. We'll also have, that will all be posted up online. I'll show you, there's a website that will have, uh, just, I think it's called, well, we'll see it in a second. So that's within the next two weeks. On the February 14th, that's a school committee meeting, that's where there'll be a public hearing on the Pawtucket budget. March 1st, that's when we're expecting the governor's budget to come to us. March 7th, that is a school committee meeting where the school committee will have to vote a budget number. And the reason why they have to vote it there is because shortly thereafter, they have to, we have to certify it by our, um, the treasurer and then send it out to each of the towns to say, hey, here's the amount based on anything that's come in that, that you would owe based on what the school committee approved for a number. So, March 15th, I believe is the, well, it's going to have to happen soon because March 15th is the latest I think it can happen because there's a 45, it's a whole ballot thing. From the voting, May 1st, if you go back 45 days, it ends up around, uh, March 15th. Well, all right. It must detect a lot of sunlight outside, so it's putting the shades down. So April 24th, that's where I believe the town meetings are going to be, that's the week before. Um, and I put in there, like, that, that's either a budget approval or potential override vote. And then May 1st, if there is an override vote, that's override would, if it was approved at that April 24th meeting, then it would be on the ballot. I know, I don't think this has come up, but again, that April 24th date for the school district is really important because if there's a delay when that happens, we have to notify teachers about whether or not they're going to be employed. I believe May 10th is when that date is, we have to notify teachers by. So if there's a meeting that happens after and the budget has not been fully approved, we have to notify 25.8 people that they may not have jobs. So the last thing is, while all this is going, we still meet, we started doing these meetings with the, the town administrators and we had their first meeting on November 1st, uh, which was similar to this. So, so what happens next? Well, we need more information, so this is not abnormal either. We need all those numbers to come in to help finalize what our budget number is going to look like. Um, and as we get those, that information, we'll refine what we've got. This is a big thing. So how can you help? So, the biggest thing you can do, the governor's budget has not come out yet. You can advocate for your towns, you can advocate for the school district. The most immediate needs, so mail, phone calls, emails. The most important things, the 14% OSD, that's, that, that hurts bad. Regional transportation and fully funding circuit breaker, those are three things. If those things all happened, that would help a tremendous amount. There's long-term area needs. The funding formula that I talked about, you know, we got to fix this, sure, I agree. Increasing circuit breaker, that's another big thing, we know, we, the millionaires tax that got passed, it's a great opportunity. That money is promised to education and secondary ed, so increasing circuit breaker would be a huge help for us. And then just the ability to review state laws to make sure that the special education funds are sustainable for our students in our district and across the state, that's also important. The other big thing is, just help spread factual information. When someone says something that's not accurate, stop them! Do not let them continue to spread inaccurate information. In math class, if a kid says 5 plus 4 is 10, you don't say, yeah, that's right, and let him go about telling everybody else 5 and 4 is 10, you don't, you stop, say, no, that's not right. In base 10 math, that's not right. But, you, you make the correction and then you move on. There's only one math person in here who got that joke, that's all right, there you go, all right. So, because at the end of the day, we really do, we all just want what's best for our, our communities. Adults, senior citizens, children, we all want what's best. And the best way we can do that is just get out accurate information. And if people have to make a decision and have the correct information, that's great. And it's not scare tactics, it's just real. Also important for you to know, I don't get to say, you should be pa, we should be passing this override, or we shouldn't be passing this override. I don't get to do that. If I do, I get a very hefty, hefty fine that I can't afford to pay. So I would lose my license, so I can't go down those roads. But these are the people that you would want to communicate with. Oh, was she? It happens. Well, Senator Tar is here. Yeah, you know? It looks, it looks like it was taken this morning. So Senator Tar, and I will just say, Senator Tar is here, and Senator Tar, since I have come here, uh, has been an extremely supportive legislator for us and, and just is on all sides of the aisle, just understands exactly where, where as a state we need to go, but really has a good understanding of our regional struggles we have as a regional district. And I would say, this building project, uh, I really appreciate even the first meeting we had, which was this meeting, like, similar meeting, where you were able to stand up, speak and said things much better than I could have, so always been here, always been a great supporter. A new senator for us, Senator Feingold. Representative Ramos was just here. Can't believe I missed that, okay. But we're more important. Amesbury, what? We're fighting in there right now, it's Pawtucket Amesbury in the air, she's, she's... And, and then Representative Shand as well. So, Representative Ramos, Representative Shand and Senator Feingold are new to us. Uh, but these are the people, and, and they listen. So, if you decide you want to invite them to a FinCom meeting, a Board of Selectment meeting, that'd be great. I know the town of West Newbury has written letters, just explaining the concerns that they have. And I, I think now's a really good time to do that. Remember, the governor's budget is not out yet. The more voices they hear, or she, she hears and the lieutenant governor hear from us, the more influence that may have. And, I'm not, I have no delusions of grandeur, right? I understand, we are small, small bedroom communities. But I think every bit of advocacy helps. So they know who we are, where they understand, we don't have big industry. We live in homes, our taxes go up extraordinarily high. And that's the only way we have to take care of our water, our roads, schools, like, that's the only mechanism we have. So I'll let you just read that and I'll explain. So, as much as there's people you're going to run into, like, ah, you guys don't even know what you're doing, FinCom has no clue what they're doing in West Newbury, uh, the school, they're just lying all the time, okay. Fine. We can debate that all day long about the town, we can debate that about the school. The fact is, if there's an override vote and all three towns do not pass it, one entity is in big trouble financially. So if two towns don't vote the override, the district, I've just showed you what will happen. If one town doesn't vote the override, that town is going to be hurting badly. And I think that fear is in all of us. Like, we understand in a municipality how bad trying to come up with that money when it's not budgeted will hurt us and what it takes away from our communities. Police, roads, water, just not good. But this, above all else, is just, that's fact. So we'll have information, this is just a new website. Is it fully launched? It's, it's up there now, it's just, it's starting, but it's PawtucketBudget.com. So, as the season progresses, more and more, the budget book will be up there, all of it will be there. We'll have links on our main website that will go to that site, once we get the budget book up and other presentations will be up there. This presentation will be there. And there'll be an opportunity, there'll be a frequently asked question page. So, this is a great place to go ahead and, and get that information. And then, the next meeting we're going to have like this will be March 9th. What's significant about that is, March 7th, the school committee, this is going to be my favorite meeting, because the school committee would have said, hey, here's the number we're voting, and then you're all going to look at me and want to punch me. I'm guessing. And I understand that, I don't take that personal, it's business. So, March 9th is the next time we're going to do, like, do a meeting like this. I, I, again, I very, very much appreciate everybody coming here. I'm not closing the meeting. If you have questions, now, now is a a great time to ask. And I know it's hard, like, this is, so ideally, right, you would have budget information, all the budget numbers, and you'd be able to ask those questions. And we don't have the budget books yet, so it's it's more of a abstract. It's Wednesday, March? Is that what you're raising your hand? So I'm going to see on technology if I can go ahead and fix this right now. It's a Tuesday, what's the Tuesday date? You know, I always, I make sure I make one mistake and I... I want you to show up on the 9th though, that'd be good. Yeah, I will, I will make, I will make that correction. I believe it's Tu- Tuesday, the the 7th. Oh, sorry, Thursday, the 9th. This Thursday, should be Thursday, the 9th. Tuesday, the 7th is the school committee meeting, Thursday, the 9th is this meeting two days later. I'm very confident of that. I will make sure tomorrow you have all the correct information. Anybody have any other? Yes, Mr. McDonald. Is this, this is on, yeah. I don't think the power's...
Daniel Acton.
There you go.
Hi. So, to Level Fund, you've included a 3% increase from each town into the budget. And you're coming up $1.3 million short, so rough numbers, you're at a growth rate of about a little over 4%. Is, is that a trend line that's going to continue every year and, and it it seems to me that it could and that you'll be requesting, uh, up 2.5 overrides, not only this coming May, but each and every year, if you don't curtail that growth rate, then this is going to be a perpetual, um, a problem in every budget.
Sure. So great, great point, and I think one of the numbers that was up there, the lowest we saw, that 4.5%? That's, that's the lowest number we saw. And so, if we could curtail it, that'd be great. I think the factors of the utility factors, the bus factors, those are huge, those are things that we just can't control. That additional amount of the 14%, so that's 12% more than what we would have budgeted, that's several hundreds, hundreds of thousands of dollars. So, go ahead, Greg. So I think... Yeah. So I think, I think a better way to answer this question is to say, the biggest cost to a school district are the people. That, that's always, it's going to be anywhere from 60 to 70% of the cost. Our, our, our teachers are at 2% increase. Our majority of our teachers are getting 2% only. There's teachers who have steps and levels, that, yes, they do move, sometimes they get 5%. But we have more than half of our, our teachers are at the top step, so the most they're getting is 2%. So that's not driven by our, our people, I guess is the point.
Could I ask a few more questions?
Of course.
All right. Okay, um, classroom sizes, you presented some numbers up there with the elementary schools.
Yep.
I believe, uh, grades 1 through 6. What, what are the, um, uh, classroom sizes for the other grades, uh, 7 through 12? And, uh, and what are the targets on those? I didn't see those numbers presented.
Yeah, yeah, so not presented, the one reason we didn't do, it's good catch. So, the reason we don't do high school is because high school varies so vastly. If you're in a writing lab, you have very small class size, you might have 15, 16. And then you might be in a PE class and you got 35. So if we do it out, it doesn't come out to, you, you could go department by department, but generally speaking, there right now, in the low to mid twenties, I think if we were in a situation where we had to make a decision about where are we pulling teachers from, I know I have school committee members here who said, told me to stop saying this, but it's coming out of the middle school, high school, because if you start, we, we are literally, Mr. Seymour, where are you? There you go. Mr. Seymour, we're purchasing furniture, additional furniture for classrooms. Why? So that's what we're preparing to go to if we have to.
Okay. So you end up cutting electives and, uh, for instance, you have, um, uh, you teach three languages, Latin, uh, German and Spanish.
Yep.
I mean, to me, if I had a choice of cutting a elementary school math teacher or the German teacher, I'd cut the German teacher. So I don't know if the school committee's looking at those things. Uh, my daughter goes to school here, uh, she takes marine biology. I like marine biology, but you know what? If, if I had a choice between elementary school, I think primary education is more important than secondary education in many ways, it's foundational. And the kids in the higher, uh, uh, levels can, uh, more, are more adaptable and they, and I think in, in some classrooms, I don't know if you're allowed to do it under, uh, uh, state law, but could you have lecture halls for, say, US history? We could have more than, uh, 21 or, or 18 or, or, you know, could you have 30 kids in the auditorium teaching US history? I, I don't know that that's a class that would need a one-on-one, uh, uh, interaction with the teacher.
Right, so, so I actually don't believe there are any rules on the class size in a high school. So in theory, yes, you could put 400 kids in here and you could teach them US history. In practice, if I'm the teacher grading those papers, I'd be a little bit upset, but I definitely understand what you're saying. So one of, yes, it is actually, that is kind of my philosophical approach on this. And it's not just that. Mr. Conan is here and Mr. Simone's here, as is Mr. Seymour and Mr. Conway. We've been tackling this for the last two or three months, that if this comes to this, we have to look at our actual schedule. And we might have to change our entire schedule and the electives in order to just compress them all down. Instead of doing seven classes, you might only have six. So if you're a student, you have your four core class, math, English, science, social studies. You have a foreign language, there's five. If you play band, that is your sixth class, that's what you got. But there's no space for wellness, which is required.
One more question and a comment. How much is in stabilization currently in the funds? Because, uh, Board of Selectment in Groveland, uh, over the last few years, we've had to tap into our piggy bank too. And we're at the shallow water mark, I mean, a healthy level is probably 10% of the budget. And, you know, we're in the same boat.
Yep, absolutely.
So, how much money do you have in your piggy bank?
Sure, you're right, so 10%, I think 5 to 10% is what the state recommends for us to have, so that for us is about 4.8 million. I believe we're right at 2 million? 2.3 million, we just put 1 million to the solar panels on the top, which is a... Yeah, 1.3 unallocated.
I have a comment, and I'm glad Senator Bruce Taris is here, I appreciate him, he's a good Republican, I appreciate that in a one-party state.
Party there, there you go.
Yes, but, um, in terms of, um, special education, it seems to me it's an absolute budget buster for, um, uh, people that live in suburbia. And, um, I don't know why the state legislature doesn't include special education in a, um, a model similar to an insurance pool. And, uh, maybe it ought to be funded through mass health. Because if we had a skewed, uh, amount of, uh, children that had special needs, how would we even afford to pay for that? And, and in a town like this where we don't have a large, uh, uh, this district commercial base to absorb it, it all falls on the taxpayers and we have a lot of seniors and a lot of people on fixed income. So I don't think it's fair for the legislature to just, uh, uh, expect the towns to absorb that where we have absolutely no control over it. And there's a mega trend within Massachusetts with the affordable housing and the 40Bs and the, uh, and the, and the requirement that we absorb some of these, uh, social, uh, inequities. And yet it's an unfunded mandate from the legislature. So I hope the new governor is listening. And I hope Senator Bruce Tar can take some leadership on that and get the mass, um, meaning mass health to absorb some of that. Because it isn't just teaching with special ed, as far as I understand. It might be a, a teacher and a nurse. Okay, there's a lot more to it than just an instructor.
So, so, I think you might have heard me say this before, but that is one of the things I get very focused on as well. And, and just as an example, you said if there was an anomaly, and, and Pawtucket, not this year as much, but in the prior three years, we had an anomaly. We had a very large number of students who were out of districts 24, 24, 7, 3, 65. So they've, have never been... never been in our district. If you counted up all the students in our surrounding districts, they wouldn't even come close to the number we had. So we had that massive burden. And again, to me, it's not the family's fault, it's not the child's fault, not the family's fault. They should be getting everything that they need. Our job is to educate all children. But I agree 100%. It is actually, it's a setup. First, that's a medical situation. Why we're paying for an education is beyond me. There is, I think there is, I know there's pushes to try to increase circuit breaker and decrease. So we have to pay right now $48,000 before they start covering 75%. So there's a push to drop that 48,000, we only have to pay 30,000. And then they cover 75 or 90%. And I know, I hope Senator Taris doesn't mind me saying this, but I have heard him say, it's all well and good when we talk about students going out of district, but what people fail to recall and understand is that school districts are bringing people in the district. We're building programs. And we don't get reimbursement for that. So while we're keeping and providing all those services here in the district, and we're building these huge programs, which are great because they keep the kids here, there's no compensation for us on that. And Senator Taris is the first person I've heard bring that up as an issue. And it's a very good issue. But, yeah, I think that entire, I've had some good conversations with a lot of legislators about this. It's not a system that is sustainable. And my first year doing a budget here, we were at a meeting with mayors, and one of the mayors of our neighboring town said, "This is not good. In a few years, we're not going to be able to afford to keep on going."
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Ask a question. So you said, I've heard a couple times that special ed, sending them out, is really expensive. Did I hear you say that on the lower end, it's 17,000, on the upper end, it was 1.3 million?
It's just over 60,000. So, a collaborative, we, Pennsyltucket belongs to two collaboratives, North Shore Education Consortium, and also the Crest Collaborative. And students there, the tuition there is just over 60,000. That does not include transportation. So, just this year is the first year that we're eligible to receive funds back for special education transportation. Prior to this year, we didn't get anything back, that was just a loss. But it is, and, sorry, 120,000 is an average out, but those students that Mr. McDonald's talking about, or that I was talking about, 24/7, 365, that's about a half a million dollars apiece, for each student.
Right now?
Right now.
Half a million dollars each student. Okay. I may have misheard you, but I thought, I heard you say you added six or seven teachers this year?
No, in the budget.
In the budget?
In the budget, yeah. Right now, in our proposed budget, there's six or seven teachers that we're looking to bring back.
So over last year, what was minus, minus what number?
So, last year, the total, so take the coaches out, that still will be, will have fewer people next year than we did last year.
Okay, that's what I was trying to find out. And does that include administrators?
There's no, so, actually, I'm glad you brought that up. This is very important.
This is very important.
Yes, this is very important. So as I recall, I remember seeing a sheet of paper, Greg, that it shows administration an increase of 20%. So I just want to, is that right? Is that number right? Yeah, there was an increase of 20%. I think that was correct. We are not adding a boatload of administrators. It just so happens, the funding, it comes out of the 1,000 series. So the 1,000 series includes all technology. So when we're going out and buying new switches and new access points, that's what's causing that increase. We're not putting administrators all over the place. But we are looking to convert, we have administrators that are currently funded by ESER. And one of them, one of the positions that we're trying to move over right now is, would be, I think that's, is that considered an administrative position? Okay, so that position would be an administrative position.
So, I'm sorry, so you're saying the number will be in a per pupil? Instead of like, administrative salaries, administrative expense, it's going to wind up in a different category? I'm sure you do the right thing, I'm just not that smart.
I'm glad you're sure.
I'm sorry, and the human resource position?
Yeah.
And that basically is what causes all of that.
Okay, so one person's coming out of ESER, back into the budget?
Right, we have three curriculum people in ESER now. We need to get them into the budget, so we're trying to wean them in over a couple of years.
Sure, right. Okay, and one HR person?
One HR person. And the rest of it's tech. Basically, access points and switches that Kate Catpage would know way more about than me.
And, sorry, does anybody want to? I have another...
Keep going, keep going.
I have a lot of questions, actually. On the budget book, will we get an electronic copy of this?
It'll go on the website.
Oh, it's on the, it'll be...
No, it will.
It will be, it will be.
It will be. I'm still writing the narrative, because I've held off as long as I can, hoping for more information on utilities, as well as a few other items, but I can wait no longer. So the budget itself is done, the supporting documents are done, the class size projections, and that's all done. It's just the narrative. And if anybody's ever read it before, you know I'm not going to put a great deal of effort into it, other than updating it. So, it should be up and running. Hopefully, next week it'll be on the website. And the books in hard copy will be brought to the towns and the libraries, as required in the regional agreement. And anybody else who needs any more than that, by all means, I'm trying not to make 4,000 copies of the thing. But, yeah, I'll bring like, three or four to each town, and then the school committee gets them. And they'll be on the website, yes.
Perfect. Thank you very much, Greg. Thank you.
Yep, sure. Thank you very much. Kathy? Sorry, I got you. I'll get you.
It's the alligator arms, man. So I wanted to share with everybody here that the superintendent and the business manager of Pennsyltucket opened their books to me, and spent two hours with me, and answered my 18 questions in detail. And I truly appreciate that. I wanted to know more than I needed to know about their finances and their budget. So that as we go through this process, and our residents in our town ask us, "What's going on? How did this happen? Where did it come from?" I'd be able to say, "Okay, this is the way it works." So, for the school, the E and D is the town's form of free cash. It doesn't have to go into stabilization, but any responsible town knows that we like to put a good portion of it into stabilization. You know, so that we have that money there for when we need to do things. Do you do that in the same year that you're asking for an override in the town? We have. We needed a ladder truck, did a debt exclusion override, and we put money in stabilization. So now I have your numbers for what you've been putting in stabilization. One of the things that, you know, the talk of the town, was, "Oh, they're going to build a new building. The next thing they're going to want is some overrides to run it." And, you know, it's kind of coming to truth, but for different reasons.
Yeah, right. All right, so, just a good point. Actually, gives me an opportunity to just, it's very important that people understand that this budget has nothing to do with the building. The building project is its own separate thing. That's a capital project that has nothing to do with the operational budget at all. And trying to have an override for this, it doesn't matter, if we were in the old buildings, this is the situation we would be in. If we had the old high school and the old middle school, we would still be in the same situation, because we're looking at the same numbers. The numbers, although the numbers of students might have been lower, because more students might have not come into the district, and more students may have left. But, yeah, the building itself, while it exists, there's no cause of the building forcing us to get positions. I think we did have that last year, which we had to do with custodians, right? We needed to, and that was a conversation about, what do you want this to be? When we come in and have a meeting like this, do you want it to be dust bunnies all over the place, and smudges all over the windows? Or do you want to keep the building in top shape like it was when it was built? But that is the only, unless I'm missing anything, I don't think I'm thinking, missing anything else. There's no cause of an override that this building has caused.
So, one follow-up question, that wasn't in my first 18 questions.
Oh, you're kidding, all right.
If you will. So back in, was it 218 or 219, when we signed a form, and it was submitted to the state, and we qualified to use some of the ESER money towards the school assessment? Was that 219, 220?
Looking to Greg.
You filled out the paperwork, right? 21? Okay, so, if we could get a copy of that to see why we qualified, perhaps that would help us in our case to the state. Because Groveland's percentage share shifted rapidly, as I explained to you in my letter to you, that we went from like, 36, 37% to like, 38, 39% like that, when the minimum contribution formula changed. Not because of the amount of money in the minimum contribution, but because West Newbury got capped in this new formula, and it just percentage-wise shifted more towards Groveland rather rapidly. And that's difficult for us, because we don't have a commercial base, we don't have a money tree, we don't have a source of new revenue that we can pull on. So, you know, the justification for some type of assistance to catch up with this would be there still, I would think, if we could see the paperwork from the first filing. Exactly. I'd just like a copy of that paperwork.
Yeah, and I would say, if you could get, Greg, I'm sure will find the paperwork.
Well, I'll do the best I can, but remember, that year is all archived up in that mess up there, because...
Right up here. He'll be smiling the entire time, and he'll get it to you.
So you'll find it.
Ah, I'll give it a shot.
So I would say, if you, when you do it, whatever you put together, I think would be beneficial certainly to the town of Groveland, and probably to the school district. Because you're, what you're asking, what I'm hearing you say is, "Want to get that information so we can put together an argument, say, the state, 'Look, this is what we've had to do over the course of the last four years, three years, however long.'" It's, we can't sustain this. We do not have the ability to do it. It's an undue burden, and can you provide us some relief?
Exactly. Thank you.
Oh, no, no, no. Alligator arms, okay, here we go.
Thank you. Ruth Rivard from the Groveland Finance Committee. I just wanted to make a comment, how much I appreciate you having all of us together tonight. Last year, I felt like there was a, I'm not going to say a division, because that's not the right word. There was a separation of process, where I felt that the school committee met and said, "This is what we need." And then they just hand us a number. And I felt like we really didn't have a conversation. And Groveland, absolutely, I guess I should be speaking for myself. I absolutely want to be supporting the school. Groveland's budget is every bit as tight as the budget that we just saw for the school. And when 60, 65% of our budget goes up by 5, 5.5%, and we raise our taxes by 2.5%, our town services, or the funds that we have for our town services, have been cut every year for the past three to five years while this has been happening. So we too have cut all of our, you know, extras. We are lean, we have employees that we want to respond to, we have residents who we want to respond to. And it's not that we don't want to pay our portion of the budget. And I felt a little bit of friction in that regard last year. So, I want to say that we very, very much want to work together. And all of this information, and this proactive dialogue, I think is really helpful for us to work with our boards, and our employees, and our, most importantly, our residents, to really try to manage our resources and our priorities. So, thank you for opening the conversation with us. It's really helpful.
I appreciate that, and more so, I appreciate everybody coming here tonight, because it's, that's a Tuesday night. There's a girls JV varsity basketball game next door. You could have gone to that. That was much more entertaining, for sure. Much more fun. Does anybody have any other questions? I'll just finish by, again, thanking everybody, thanking everybody for coming tonight. And again, that fact I put up there, I think, Ruth, is what you just spoke to. Like, it's the towns' need, the district needs, and it's just, it's been a very challenging year. And when we work together, we collaborate, we get the correct information out, people are making decisions that are educated decisions. And that's all I think we can, that's all we're looking to do. So, thank you, everybody, for coming. I really appreciate it. And I will send you the date, the actual date of that next meeting, I promise. But don't forget, February 14th, the school committee will have a public comment on budget. Thank you, everybody. Take care.